Great, thank you Sean. I would like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the Tumwater School District sits on the ancestral lands of the Nisqually Squawson Island and Chehalis people. I thank these caretakers of the land who have lived on and continue to live on the land since time immemorial. Please rise as I lead us in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone. Before we begin, I would like to remind members of the public that if you wish to address the board during public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to email your name and topic to beckyparsons@becky dot parsons@tomwater dot k one two dot wad dot us. Comments must have been submitted to Becky no later than 6pm. When we reach public comment portion of the agenda, Becky will read off your name, make you a panelist if you're on Zoom so you're able to be seen and heard, and you will then be given the opportunity to read your comment. The initial speaker on a topic will be provided five minutes. Additional speakers on the same topic will be allowed three minutes for a total of 20 minutes on any one topic. If public comment goes over the allotted time, the meeting will be recessed for 30 minutes. And the meeting will continue remotely. We are already remotely, so we will simply mute you. And then Becky Parsons will also serve as timekeeper and will notify you when your time is up. If you do not sign up in time and you're not able to address the board, you are welcome to email your comments to the board or and our superintendent. All parties have the same setup, first name, dot last name, at tomwater dot k one two dot wad dot us. And now we'll go on to agenda and discussion or approval superintendent Dotson, have there been any changes or additions to the agenda since it was published?
Since the last published agenda.
And is there any changes to the agenda? I do have one change, I'm going to take off the WIA update. Alright. Thank you everyone, we're going to move on to meeting minutes review. The board has had the opportunity to review the minutes from the December 9th meeting. Are there any changes? Okay, great, now thank you, we will move on to the consent agenda. I missed that, go ahead, do you have questions about the consent agenda? I'm sorry, the minutes?
Yes, I have a question about the minutes, but I think the first question is, how are we to indicate to you that we would like to speak? Is the hand raise an acceptable process? Or would you like, how would you like to do that?
Yes, yeah, let's do the hand raise and then I might need some assist because I'm looking at a couple of different screens, but I will now pay more attention to that hand raise for sure.
Okay. So my clarifying question in the minutes, and I did send a note to superintendent Dotson about this earlier, the minutes as they're stated now with the results from the elections that we had, indicate the result for the legislative rep would have me continuing on in my current role and ending July 1st, 2022. And there's those two policies that kind of are interesting about when they say when you elect the legislative rep and then when the term begins. So that will need to be corrected if the term, the next term is actually to begin July 1st, 2022. So superintendent, would you like to speak to that briefly?
Yeah, so I reviewed both policies and what I read in that is that we elect in December, and policy 1220 that actually describes the role of the legislative rep says that the person assumes office July 1st in an even year for a two-year period. So we had the election in December, but elected Director Keiken into that role. The way that seems to work in the policy is that that term would actually, she's already serving a term as a legislative rep, but would initiate that term July 1st for a two-year term under the current policy. And then that would have the board back in December 2023, electing a legislative rep again to begin a term July 1st, 2024. It's kind of a strange setup. It's partially because we elect officers in December, but the intent of having, I think, a July 1st start for the legislative rep is that they start in between the legislative sessions. So longer term, it may be good to fix that awkwardness by either just saying, let's elect the legislative rep annually if the board chooses, or that would be a change to policy 1220, or go back to 1210 and just say, indicate that that position is elected every other year, as opposed to the others that are on an annual basis. But the way the policy is now, probably best to just correct in the, in the, in the notes that the term would begin July 1st, 2022.
Okay, thank you Sean. Let's probably in some time in the near future, let's look to get that policy updated and we'll see through, not a high priority, but probably needs to be done sometime before it's live. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda items, so again, if you need to, board members which speak can raise your hand and I should be able to flag you down. The board has had the opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second. Thank you Director Keiken, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is passed, thank you. We will now move on to student reports. The question for this month is, this year, we are doing all we can to maintain in-person instruction. When individuals, classrooms, or schools experience outbreaks, they are sometimes required to shift to a remote instruction temporarily. If this happens, what feedback do students have about how we can support them most? Now, a very detailed question, but one that probably is worth considering. So do I have a volunteer who would like to go first on what they've liked to report?
I can go first, so, yeah, yeah. So this question was kind of hard for kids, they had to like read it multiple times, but it is definitely a good question. So I had a lot of kids saying not to give as much work, and if you are to give work, not have it be lots of like busy work, like something more essential to the course or like with the specific thing they're going over. I had requests for no like two-hour-long Zoom meetings, so keeping them within the same time as a regular school day, just because two hours was just not like, kids didn't have enough time span for that to pay attention. And you sit there for a bit and it's just like, it's too much for them. Um, a few kids said to constantly update things that are happening, um, and like give assignments before they're due, like a bit before they're due, because some kids would get like an assignment like a day before it's due, or like the day it's due, and it was just like overwhelming. What else? A request for teachers to only use Google Classroom and not other websites such as like Canvas or Turnitin or anything like that, because it was just too much for them to, I don't know, like, keep in their, I don't know, resources. Um, then I had some kids just saying to keep things concise and to the point, and one student said prioritize the student's education above all and help them see the value in it. So yeah, I thought that was a nice statement. That's kind of all I have, yeah.
Great, thank you Talia, appreciate that. Who would like to go next? I'm sorry, any questions for Talia on her first real quick from any of the board members? Alright, great, thank you again. Alright, who would like to go next then?
I'll go.
Okay, go ahead.
So some responses said less class, less assignments, and actually said less busy work too. So that's pretty interesting that they said the same words. Some other things I said is more online resources that could help them, more class discussion activities, or like one-on-one time with the teacher could be helping them going to school to do projects, like they're saying like specifically like science projects because we don't have that type of equipment at our house, so we can't really do that stuff. And leaving activities like sports or clubs open would be, they would like to do that too. Probably like on Zoom, because like we do the remote, we can't do it in person, so like on Zoom, something like that. Well, I'm not sports, but clubs. Then another one is like explaining like the assignments and the details of them, and like if they're like due today, like when they're due, and like how they're done, like just more details. And then some things that teachers can help with them is like emailing students back as soon as they can, if they have questions about like the assignment or like homework. And they would like for teachers to encourage them not to attend the Zoom meeting in a space where they know that they would be distracted, or they were like fall asleep, something like that. So just encouraging them to like, try to get in a good space that help you learn. Being lenient on students arriving on the Zoom call a little bit later because of like internet issues or technology issues, then there's some like suggestions and comments that I got, it's like saying like hybrid, they would like to do that, at least have one or two days. And for the school to like supply like school materials, that could help them too. And then I also want to say like, a lot of the students, they like being in person, and because like it's more like beneficial to them, like physically, because like P and stuff like that, and then like mentally too, being around people. But like the people who do want to go to remote, it's mainly focused because of like health issues, like because of COVID and stuff. So basically, it's just what I, that's what I got.
Great, thank you very much. And is Alexander here with us today?
I don't see him in the, in any attendees list.
Yeah, I checked as well too, I didn't see him in there, so, okay. Alright, well, thank you students, appreciate that. Now we move on to recognition and public comment and follow-up by the numbers. So I will turn that over to, looks like Sean Batstone is up first on recognition. Oh, I'm sorry Sean, are you going to go with the public comment follow-up?
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do a quick public comment follow-up. We had one public comment at our last meeting, and that was from, from DJ Breimer who spoke on the budget, and just kind of sharing that Jennifer's going to provide a budget update tonight to help clarify our current budget status. And while we've had some discussions about budget and Article Two meetings, I think we just, it's going to be so important through this year that we keep working on communication with our staff and associations to make sure we're all on the same page and have a clear understanding of where we are in this budget challenge. I know people are working super hard right now across the whole district, and so if they're feeling like we have funds available to hire additional staff, I know that would be frustrating, and so we want to make sure everyone understands that fiscal reality we have, so we can all work together on the decisions that lead us out of it as soon as possible. So I want to thank for the public comment, and then we'll move forward. And I don't have any by the numbers tonight, because we want to focus on several recognitions. And yes, with that, I want to bring, I want to invite Sean Batstone forward, I need to get him onto the panel, so it sounds, it looks like, oh, Becky dropped, jumped out of it before, so I am the only host on here now, and the only one who can move people. So let me see if I can get Becky set.
While you're doing that Sean, when DJ said some stuff that might have led some people to believe that we had money, and it might, for people that don't understand how the budget works, I think it would be helpful in the follow-up to maybe, to maybe address some of those issues specifically, so, and not to, not to say that he was wrong, but to explain how this works. And because right now, the, the language that's out there is what he said, and it's not, it's, that's not how it works.
Yeah.
And, or maybe that's, maybe that's communicated to staff in a way that can help them understand the budget, but it's, it's leading people to, to believe things that aren't true about our budget.
Yeah, we did not have the funding that was expressed in that public comment, and I think the best way to clarify that is through the, the budget report that we'll have Jennifer share soon, because I think that's going to show, here's where we are truly fund balance-wise. And, and I, we've tried to understand what are the numbers that were used in that, and how they came about, and I think that's why we want to get clear on where is our budget right now. And Jennifer will be able to show exactly where we're trending, what the projections are toward into the year, because I think to try and really respond to the numbers that were in that, they don't align with what we have in our budget, is the bottom line. And where are, and what we see in terms of payroll, expenses, and revenues, it's just not lining up with what we heard in that public comment. And so I think what our best bet is to share the, the budget status as of right now with the best information we have.
Okay, thank you.
So let's see if I can get, I'm still, I still need to be able to get Sean onto this panel, so I got, there we are, Sean, I'm going to move you up onto the panel now, so hopefully you have an invitation to join us. And Becky, let's get you set up as a co-host so you can help us out with that now. Alright. Hello Sean, and so Sean is going to help us with two fantastic recognitions for our school resource officers and for Tim Graham, and thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me, I always appreciate the chance to participate in these recognitions because they are important to the work we're doing. And I just got to thinking, maybe I could help with some by the numbers, so I'll see if I can weave some of that into where we go. So I'd like to begin with our school resource officer recognition, because we are super fortunate in the Tumwater School District to have this agreement with the city of Tumwater that allows us the opportunity to meet our goal. I would say goals of ensuring and securing learning, our learning environment for our students is super important to this work. So we always think of safety and security as part of this, and we're lucky to have our student resource officer program. Through our SRO program, we're able to provide two student resource officers to support the high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools in our district. So if you were to visit our SROs on any one particular day, you might see them involved in any or all of those environments. Tonight though, we'd like to take a moment to recognize the important work our SROs do each and every day to support our schools. So as you know, we started last spring by collecting data from our SROs to better understand all the kinds of supports that our SROs provide on a daily basis. But what you may not know is that our SROs have assisted and do assist in a variety of ways. So let's start maybe with a little by the numbers. Forty-one times our SROs have assisted with internet safety responses, cybersecurity, those kinds of things. One hundred and twenty-one illegal activity responses, including things like vandalism, trespassing, and theft. A really important component is there is activity that police officers and SROs have to respond to. In addition though, our officers have also provided 100 social emotional support responses, including such things as consulting with students and parents at the school, or assisting with medical emergencies. We even help to resolve issues at home and use our SROs to help guide that process. Lastly though, our SROs pride themselves probably the most on being part of the school community and assisting with community outreach and support when needed. And this is where this becomes a super important part of our program. They help with emergency drills, they participate in school events, they assist with COVID screening, even help with student transportation and traffic issues. I love this picture that you see on your screen right there, right? Because that's just an example about the important ways our SROs believe they can impact our school community by building relationships and being of service. So tonight, we want our SROs in the city of Tumwater to know how grateful we are for their service and support. So please join me in recognizing SRO Detective Tyler Bowling, SRO Detective Ross Roman, and Lieutenant Jen Kolb. So we'd just like to say a big thank you for all you do. And Sean, if you could do me a huge favor, yeah, claps and applause. I believe Jen, Jennifer Kolb is in the attendee list, could you promote her for just a brief second? She wanted perhaps the opportunity to share a couple of words as well. Do you have the ability to do that for her?
She's right next to you on my screen.
Perfect, I don't get to see anybody else in my screen, so fantastic, Jennifer?
So yeah, I just wanted to express our gratitude to the Tumwater School District for the relationship we've built, and that we continue to nurture. The support we've received from the district, despite some of the opinions of us, has always been appreciated. Our SROs have always committed to providing, you know, the best service to the students, the staff, the families, the district, and the support we've received from you guys allows us to continue doing that. We look forward to continuing to serve the needs of the district and serving the students. You know, our goal is to help the students achieve and be successful. And we do that in the ways that Sean mentioned. So you know, the social emotional learning, the ability to interact with the kids, the informal counselors, just another adult in the building, somebody that they can talk to, and that's their role. And we absolutely love being a part of the Tumwater School District, and we look forward to continuing this relationship.
I know Ross and Tyler are both on there as well, so thank you gentlemen for coming tonight as well. We wanted to make sure we had that chance to just say a big thank you, and the continued work and support, much appreciated here. Alright, next up for us Sean is an opportunity to say thank you to another important member of our team, Tim Graham. You know, it is my honor to have the opportunity to recognize Tim Graham for his contributions to not only athletics, but the Tumwater School District. You know, Tim is not only an influence in Tumwater and throughout the state, but really also nationally, and that's what brings us here today. It's not often in a school district that we have the opportunity to honor the work of a member of our team that is at an impact on the national level. Recently, Tim was awarded the Frank Kowalewski Award, and that is an award that is presented to an individual who possesses and contributes to the vision of professional development at all levels, local, state, and national. I'd like to share with you this award presentation that was recently given, because I think it really does help to illustrate this award. And then once that's shown, let's come back together and say a couple more words, Sean? Did you get a chance to include that volume in there Sean?
I just realized if I don't tell it to add.
That's that one when you go to promote it, yeah.
You'll have a silent video, which will not be exactly what you want.
Tim, we can always just talk about it now, I'm scared.
Try that one more time, and let's do the share and make sure we get the sound on it. Share sound, and now you should have sound with your.
The Frank Kowalewski Professional Development Award is presented each year to an NIAA member who possesses and has contributed to the vision of professional development, the legacy of Frank Kowalewski, and who has made significant contributions and demonstrated excellence in professional development at the local, state, and national levels. The recipient of the 15th Annual Frank Kowalewski Professional Development Award is Tim Graham from Washington. Athletic Administrator Tim Graham holds 20 years of experience in the profession. He works at Tumwater School District in Washington and is a 20-year member of the NIAA.
I began my athletic career after coaching three sports. I was a football wrestling and head baseball coach for 10 years, and a position opened up at our high school, I was thinking, you know, that's a great way for me to be able to influence the positive directions our student athletes are going. It would have more of an influence than me just coaching three sports, so I thought about, yeah, that's something I could end up doing. But I wanted to influence, or have that influence over all of the programs, rather than just the three I was coaching. All the programs I was coaching in, I always had a character education piece about it, we promoted it and developed it, and, and felt that we were known for our sportsmanship and character development within our programs. And then becoming an athletic administrator, that was one of the first things that I wanted to do, is develop an overall character development program. So we, I've had captains councils at our school, and we've done that within our own league. We have conducted courses for our league and in our state that really are surrounding that character education.
Graham has been teaching LTI courses for 18 years and is a finisher of 38 LTI courses as well. In addition, Graham helped rewrite several courses such as LTC 703, 501, 502, and he assisted in developing LTC 503.
When I became an athletic director, my assistant superintendent, who was a former athletic director, brought me into his office, and this is the first September that he said and goes, and he told me that for you to be an athletic director in our school, you need to get yourself involved, you need to get yourself involved at the state level, you need to get yourself involved at the national level. So we're going to send you to the national conference. And, and I did, I went down to New Orleans, and as every athletic administrator did, I took four LTI courses and, and dragged my way through that and brought all those books back home. And in the next year, he said, okay, now that you're involved in that, you need to get yourself on a committee. So he had been on the publications committee previously, so making a few phone calls, said you need to, you need to be able to write. So I wrote a couple of articles for our, our state magazine for that, that published, and sure enough, in 2000, I got onto the publications committee. Well, leadership training, obviously, you know, began with Frank Kowalewski and with the award it is named after, and, and it's an important piece of what we do as athletic directors in the NIAA. So I've taken many courses and taught a lot of them, and I've also been fortunate enough to be in a part of the development of two of them and the rewriting of one of them. We want to be able to educate others in our profession. And to be quite honest with you, every time I teach a course, I learn something myself. And, and that's a true benefit is why we're trying to give back to others, it certainly comes back to you. When I first became a member of the NIAA, Frank was our secretary and executive director, and so I knew of him and what he was going, all, all the things that he had promoted and pushed through the NIAA, and obviously, one of those is athletic director education, and that's so important. And he was in the forefront of that, and it's truly an honor to be thought of in the same vein as a professional development promoter with the Frank Kowalewski. One of the things that we have to do when we get into this profession, and it's just kind of ingrained in it, is that servant leadership piece is giving back. And it's, it's not only an expectation, I believe it's a responsibility for us to give back to our profession in that way. So to get this award and be in that company, and some of those people that have come before me obviously are very good friends of mine, and to see what they've done, and to be a part of the promotion of professional development across the United States is certainly an honor, and, and I'm proud of that, and I'm thankful for all those who have come before me and have pushed me to this position.
It is now my honor to present the Frank Kowalewski Professional Development Award to the current athletic administrator for the Tumwater School District in Tumwater, Washington. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Tim Graham.
Now I just have to say, before joining the Tumwater School District, I reached out to some of my colleagues in the area to ask about the athletics program is, you know, I knew one of the roles and responsibilities of the assistant superintendent would be to help oversee athletics. And one of my colleagues said, as I was asking, how, what do you think, what do I need to know? And the person said to me, don't worry about it, you have Tim Graham. And I said, oh. and from that moment, I took the job. Tim, I have to tell you, I have been super grateful each and every day for the hard work and passion that you have for our schools and our school community. And I'm very grateful. So please join me in recognizing and thanking Tim Graham for his contributions to our school district. Much deserved. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any comments or from the board members, comments or questions that often the board members on the previous two recognitions?
Thought I'd offer that out there. I don't know if Melissa's hand went up last time or not. I couldn't tell.
Yeah, Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, I just that didn't sound good. So because Tim is right there in front of my face right now. I know that in my day job, I call Tim when we need help in still come to think through things. So I'm really happy that he takes my call. And I hope he doesn't feel obligated since I'm a board member. But I know that he's respected by districts all across the state, not just those of us in Tom Water, but across the state. Tim is known as someone who is helpful and someone who helps people think through problems. And then the thing I wanted to say about the SROs was I've luckily never had to see them do police work per se. I've only gotten to see them connecting with kids. And that's what I think our our school resource officers, you know, that's what I love about our school resource officers is that they're connecting with kids. And that's kind of the, that's kind of the theme with these recognitions. It's always about connecting with kids in every job. Tim does that in his job. And he's and and he's developing people to do that in their jobs. I mean, I don't, all the five O's, five O ones and five O twos and five, I don't know exactly what that means. But I'm pretty sure what it means is helping people become better leaders themselves so they can lead people on how they can develop kids. So I'm only guessing that because that's what Tim does in his everyday life. And so thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Director Beer. Director Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Tim, I just want to say a word of congratulations to you. It's quite an honor and achievement to, I actually looked up that award and I'm aware about it. So I do know that it's quite an achievement. So congratulations. And I know I can probably say for everybody here that we're real lucky to have you in our district. And you are truly a source of pride for all of us. So thank you. And just to couple on to what Director Beard said about the SROs, just a quick note of thanks to them as well. I feel as a parent first, I always feel really good that we have our SROs. So thank you to them and for all their hard work as well.
Great. Thank you, Director Sale. Director Keikinen, go ahead.
Just repeating, congratulations, Tim, and a huge thank you and a huge thank you to our SROs as well.
Thank you. Yes. Director Killow, go ahead.
All right. Well, due to our age difference, I've always viewed Tim as kind of a father figure all these years. Now, Tim was the person who hired me to coach baseball at Tom Water High School. And I will always be grateful for that. But my favorite story I tell people is Tim and I were taking a walk out to the stadium. And he put his arm around me and said, hey, we need a golf coach. And I said, well, I play golf, but I don't know a thing about coaching golf. He said, I don't need you to know how to play or how to coach golf. I need someone who's responsible, who won't embarrass the program and build relationships. And that's what I know Tim for. He's so so behind coaches, obviously knowing X's and O's, but building relationships and building character. So thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Director Kilo. Yes, I would also like to thank the SROs as well, Tyler and Ross. They do much more than was mentioned here. They even deal with traffic at our grade schools during our crazy pickups, you know, as well too, not to mention hundreds of other things. So thank you. And then Tim Graham, of course, yes, everyone said everything great. Guy too have known Tim for quite a while, and it's been a pleasure the entire time. Truly a professional and we are beyond fortunate to have him here at Tom Water School District. And I look forward to the next 15 to 20 years of him being the athletic director. Thank you, Tim. No, no. All right, fine. Okay, Superintendent Dotson, I believe you're still going through your recognition. You want to go ahead?
I have one more. And just before we transition to that, I'll just just add on to what you've all said. And I think you've said it very well, but we're super thankful, Tim Graham, for all you do for our athletic programs and appreciate the, I hear from people that that say they wish they had had you in their district, and I'm glad we have you in ours. And for our school resource officers, for Ross and Tyler, I have been fortunate. I've had the chance to see them in action when they're counseling students and supporting kids who are having a really tough time. And I'll tell you what, they are gentle and kind and super supportive in ways that that make me proud of the partnership we have with them. So so appreciative of their support work as well. So now it's time for us to transition. We've been hearing from our board members thanking others. And it's time we take a moment to thank our board members for their work. And I'm going to reshare my screen so that I can use this great graphic that we received from that Lori created the other day and is up on our Facebook page. So January is School Board Recognition Month. And there has never been a more important time to recognize the complex work of board members than I think right now. Our board members, I don't know if everyone understands, are volunteers really, who who give their time and work tirelessly to learn about the enormous wide breadth of issues a school district has to face. What we see in a board meeting is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of what our board members have to do to be ready for this job, studying the issues that in order to perform their roles, attending variety of meetings, visiting schools, listening and responding to community members, attending professional development to learn about school district operations, about best practices and about issues. I think the the other thing is the role of a board member comes with a weight of responsibility and and high community expectations because we want the very best for our students. And our board members work so hard to learn about, to take responsibility, that responsibility seriously. And they're all deeply committed to making this Tom Water School District the best possible place for our students. And I think that's apparent in their work every day. So we're also really fortunate to have three outstanding student board representatives who give their time to learn about issues impacting our students and bringing information to bring student voice to our discussions. And so so thankful for for you as well. And this is often thankless work. It's important that we take time to say thank you to our board members for their service and for what you do. And as part of that, I want to move over. There is a proclamation from the governor that I'd like to have the opportunity to share with you. It's maybe a little small on your screen, so I'll go ahead and and read this. It's whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society who enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards and nine elected ESB district boards are the core of public education governance system in our state. And whereas districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 million students, have a combined annual budget of over $15 billion and employ approximately 120,000 people. And whereas school directors play a critical role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors are directly accountable to the citizens, residents in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school directors and educational districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas it's appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions of public education. I doubt now therefore I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, hereby proclaim January 2022 a School Board Recognition Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Tell us a little bit about about it, but really it it comes down to through this putting in the time and taking on that weight of responsibility for the very difficult decisions that come before our school boards every day. We're so appreciative of the work you do. Thank you for your service to our district. Thank you for for your willingness to do it through this extraordinarily difficult time. And just want to take a moment to to ask all those who are not here on the panel, but here with us to to join me in thanking the board for all you do to support Tom Water School District.
Great. Well, thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. And so we did not have any by the numbers. Is that correct?
You did not.
Okay, all right.
Had several recognitions, and I think that's where we focus our energy. Sean brought you some by the numbers, actually.
Those were, and those were great ones. Yes, those are always good to hear. So thank you, Sean and Sean. All right. So we will now move on to public comment. Just a reminder, before we begin with public comment, the Becky Parsons will call on each person that submitted their name and topic by 6:00 PM by email, allowing them the opportunity to read their statement. The first submission on a topic will receive five minutes. Every submission thereafter on the same topic will receive three minutes for a total of 20 minutes on any one topic. Becky will serve as timekeeper and will inform the speaker when their time is up. The board does not discuss personnel matters or matters involving student discipline in an open meeting. Such matters are only addressed in an executive session. Concerns about such matters should first be addressed with superintendent designee who will then when appropriate, inform and involve the board. The board will likely not respond at this at this time. I'm sorry, let me repeat that. The board will likely not respond as this is a time for us to hear your issue. Please note that all submissions will be shared with the board and superintendent. Upon hearing your comment, the board will take it under advisement and will, as needed, ask the appropriate staff members to follow up with you if needed. Becky, did we receive any submissions for public comment today?
We did. DJ Breimer.
Thank you, Becky. You want to go ahead and promote DJ? Looks like you have there. Okay. And Becky, are you ready to start the time?
I am. Are you ready, DJ?
I am. Thank you. How is my volume coming through?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, everybody. My name is DJ Breimer. I'm a sixth grade science teacher at Tom Water Middle School, and my daughter is a seventh grade student at Tom Water Middle School. I'm also the Vice President of the Tom Water Education Association. The Tom Water School District was the subject of a financial audit from the Office of the Washington State Auditor for the time period of September 1, 2019 to August 31, 2020. Washington State Auditor Pat McCarthy found no discrepancies or deficiencies in the Tom Water School District budget as a result of that audit. He also found no instances of noncompliance at the state or federal level. The final audit report was published November 29, 2021. The report number is 1028479. While the report does not audit the Tom Water School District finances from September 1, 2020 to the present, what does hold true is a discrepancy between the report findings and certain statements made to the Tom Water School District Board of Directors by the district leadership team. The district leadership team previously informed the Board of Directors that the current budget deficit began during the spring of 2019, around April or May of that year. Now it appears this statement may have been incorrect at best based on the findings released by the Washington State Auditor in the report dated November 29, 2021. Please take Washington State Auditor Pat McCarthy's audit report into consideration when making future decisions regarding the Tom Water School District budget. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Great. Thank you, DJ. Okay. Before I move on to boards, to reports to the board, I wanted to read a quick statement on behalf of the school board real quick. And I'm going to go ahead and read the statement, and then we'll go ahead and move on. But I wanted to acknowledge this here today before we get much further in our meeting. The Tom Water School Board would like to extend our deepest consoles condolences to the family, friends, and staff that were fortunate to know Skylar Bush, our Michael T. Simmons third grader who left the earth too soon. Skylar was described as a caring child who displayed a bright spirit and loved to laugh. We know that many staff and students are feeling the significant loss, and we are committed to providing supports for them to process this during this difficult time. Our hearts go out to her, her mom, her family, and her friends. So thank you. And I wanted to go ahead and present that. And then I know our board members will also want to probably mention something in their comments as well too. So feel free to go ahead and do that. So moving on in our agenda, wanted to go ahead then and do board reports. And this is generally where we'll have reports to the board from district staff. Usually Jennifer will be there. And we'll have potentially Sean Batstone or Sean Dotson give us reports here. So that's what this topic area will generally be about. So Jennifer, are you ready to go ahead and start?
I am ready.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
But I don't think it's really fair that I get to follow all those awesome recognitions with a budget update, really? So I think we change it around next time.
We'll work on that. Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm excited to provide this. I believe this is the first in-person budget update I provided other than those things that go on the consent agenda every month. So because of the discussions we've been having and where our fund balance appears to be trending, I am hoping for the opportunity to have, give a budget update in person at every meeting in the following coming months. So I have a few slides that I want to go through to hopefully explain where our budget situation is right now and where we think it's going based on the most recent projections that I've gone through. So Sean, if you want to move. So first of all, I wanted to give an enrollment update. Since we know that's where the majority of our funding comes from. And I apologize, these two numbers here, really, the green line and the blue line kind of collided there. So you can't really see what the numbers are. But the the green is the 2122 year where we're at current to date, and the number is 6138.24. And so what I really want to point out is that we have collided with our 1920, which was at 6143, so just a few students higher. So I'm hoping that that indicates that we're on a trajectory of what looks like a normal year pre-COVID. If that is the case, we tend to just slightly decline. The top two lines are the last two normal full years pre-COVID. And it shows that we kind of slightly declined towards the end of the year. Hopefully, I don't have a crystal ball, but hopefully that green line continues to go up. But that is an unknown. And so we we wait for those numbers every month and put them out as soon as we can, as soon as we have them. Um, I, I think unless there's any questions about the enrollment numbers, just one point to make is our funding is based on our average annual. So they take our beginning and every month thereafter, and they adjust our enrollment to actual in January. So in our January apportionment, we receive an adjustment to our apportionment. We are the average of those of the four first four months. We're at about 16 students less than what we budgeted, which was 6122. So we're a little bit below that on the average, which means that we will have a slight reduction in our January apportionment. But there's a lot of things that impact that such as CTE enrollment, SPED enrollment, ELL enrollment, LAP enrollment. It's not just our basic ed enrollment. So we have to make some assumptions about what that reduction will be, but we'll know in a couple of weeks. So that'll be helpful. Okay, Sean. Okay, so this slide is very colorful. I like this one because it really is a good picture that depicts where we're at and where we've been over the past five years. And again, the last couple of years haven't been normal years. So it's really hard to make predictions and projections about where we're going through the end of the year. And a couple of things I want to point out is the blue line is where we're at right now. The yellow line is last year. And it looks like we're pretty closely following that line. But based on some recent projections on some new numbers that we have pulled together, it looks like that blue line will likely flatten out a little bit more in line with the, more in line with that purple line there, which was 1920. Again, that was a normal year until the end. So we're hoping that we're anticipating that we won't drop below that bottom line, which will be zero before the end of the year. But like I said, we do have adjustments coming at the end of January, and that will give us a much better picture. So we'll be watching these very closely. And we will be keeping you informed if need be more frequently than monthly as we monitor that. Okay, so I wanted to kind of go through some numbers of where our projection looks like we're heading towards the end of the year. So our beginning fund balance, as you can see, we were about almost $500,000 above where we projected. So this is just a budget compared to our projection through the end of the year. So we did go back and claim some additional- So we did go back and claim some additional grant funds, some SRR funds, so that we could bring our fund balance up to our minimum fund balance at the end of the 2021 year. So that was the increase in our budget versus projected. Um, and then the next two things I want to point out are, um, everybody talks about our expenditures and how we might be understaffed, and we have money that we, that we need to spend. Although our expenditures is about 3.1 million less, um, projected to be less than our budgeted expenditures, our revenue reduction is outpacing the expenditure reduction. So what that does to the bottom line is we are showing a projection of three and a half million at the end of the year um, compared to the budget of 4.9 million. And so that's about a 1.46 million reduc- 1.4 million reduction in what we expected our ending fund balance to be. Um, but at this point in the year, there are a lot of assumptions that we make when, when making these projections. So I think it's fair to give myself a 2% budget range. And so I'm saying our, our, um, our target range is, um, to end, end our fund balance, if we don't make any changes, at about two and a half million to four and a half million um, for ending fund balance. And then that rate, that, that margin of error will decrease as we get monthly actuals. So as we get closer to the end of the year, of course, we'll have better numbers and know better where we're going to end the year. But as of right now, that's, I think that's fair. Um, okay, so this slide, so on the previous slide, can you go back again, Sean? Um, so I just wanted, since these are significant numbers, 4 million and 3 million, I just wanted to break them down a little bit more and talk about the larger items that make up those reductions. So that's what the next slide is. So our revenues, um, we have, I, I'm estimating that we're going to have about a $200,000 January portion of adjustment to reflect our current enrollment numbers. And again, that's an estimate because as I mentioned before, there's a lot of factors that play into that calculation. Um, we had a reduction in our levy equalization, um, of $640,000. And th- those are, those are funds that are to help bring us up to a certain level of levy collections, um, that is set by the state. And because our assessed property values went up so much, almost 17% and, uh, over the past year, um, we are not receiving as much levy equalization dollars because we are generating more per student. But our increased levy collections, because of the amount we're, we're, um, uh, collecting per student and our voter-approved levy authority, we are only collecting an additional approximately $100,000. So that is a net decrease of about $540,000. And we also used SRR funds, I've mentioned this before, I believe, but we've used SRR funds in 2021 um, for expenditures that were COVID-related in order to bring our fund balance up to the minimum fund balance for last year that we had budgeted in the current year. Um, we are, um, the, the, the trajectory that we're going with food service, looking at the revenues we're at year-to-date and the point we are in the year, we, I've had to reduce the, the expected budgeted revenue by $500,000. Um, and then local deposits, um, local deposits is made up of several things. We have, um, obviously, we have a lot of, um, facility use revenue that we're not bringing in this year. And then we also have student fees that we've been waiving this year, um, and then we have a lot of CTE resale. Um, for example, like the culinary arts program, that there are a lot of events that were canceled, so we're not bringing in those revenues. And then on the expenditure side, um, salaries and benefits are down about 3.1 million from budget. Um, and that is mainly due to shortages in staff for bus drivers, custodians, um, paras and subs. Um, some of that is offset with, um, overtime because with those, um, staffing shortages, we have a lot more overtime. So the net is about 3, 3.1 million. Again, that is, that is less than our reduction in revenue. So even though we have a reduction, we have to look at the revenue side also. And I just noted some assumptions made here that we're going to fully maximize our grant funds in these projections, meaning that we won't carry over any funds next year. We will use all of our SRR and other grant funds that we have available this year. Um, we're, we're making assumptions that there will be no new revenue streams and that we are fully spending our budgeted, um, operational costs, our non-kay role costs. Um, we don't typically fully spend, usually it's within about 1 to 2%. Um, but again, this year we have a lot of COVID-related expenses that SRR did not fully cover. So we are spending more of our, um, operational costs than we have in the past. And then I wanted to mention some factors that impact our budget predictions because again, there is a margin of, um, a range that we need to look at and we can't come up with an exact number because I've already talked about the enrollment, um, uh, projections and then legislative decisions. As, as you all know, um, Tomata School District doesn't fare very well in a lot of the prior legislative decisions um, due to our, our higher experienced staff and our lower poverty. Um, and so we're hoping that some changes can be made to those funding models that, that, um, make things equitable across the state. Um, additional grants, um, we did receive an additional $420,000 of a Department of Health Grant or returned to, um, uh, learn to return, I will say to reach, no, return to learn. Um, so to keep kids at school, um, to help with our COVID, um, prevent preventative measures such as contact tracing and, um, tracking systems that we had to put in place. Um, there's a lot of additional time being spent on those activities, so we have a lot of overtime and we are using those funds to help pay for some of our COVID sick room staff. So, and then, um, the, the expenditures, um, there are expenditures that come up that, that weren't in the budget. Um, some of those are, are recently are sped staffing, so we have some more, um, students that are requiring one-on-one services. And then we have additional COVID impacts that cost more money for PPE and other items. Um, special ed safety net funding, what this is, this is funding we receive for um, our special ed students that are considered higher cost. They might have a one-on-one para with them or teacher, or they may have, um, an out-of-district placement and they cost much more than our other, um, special ed students. So we do apply to the state and receive additional funding for those. Last year it was 150,000, but I'm hoping we'll get some more this year because we do have, uh, more one-on-one students. Um, our property assessment values, I've talked about that a little bit. They did go up quite a bit. Our voter-approved levy, um, we have a maximum amount that we can collect every year based on the voter, voter's approval and staff shortages, I've already talked about staff shortages. Um, and then profit and loss in various departments have been increasing, um, over the past few years, food service, special ed and transportation. So we're watching those, um, very closely to, um, see if there are any structural changes that we can consider, um, to help with those, um, losses. Okay, so some of the next steps we are working on is we're reviewing opportunities for early cuts because as we all know, the, the more we can do this year, um, to lessen the impact of next year is just better on the whole system. And, um, setting up meetings with departments, so we started scheduling meetings with all of our, um, custodial, um, food service, transportation, we're looking at all of our departments to see if there are any possible structural changes and make sure we're operating of, uh, uh, efficiencies. And we're having discussions at our DLT meetings, district leadership team meetings every week, um, and presenting to ad council, talking about possible cuts and getting feedback. Um, we're going to be starting much earlier on the budget process. We're hoping to have enrollment projections to the board by next month and staffing decisions as far as knowing what kind of cuts may need to come next year as early as March this year. Um, a lot of that work is done a couple of months later typically. And then, um, we plan to bring a resolution forward next month for authorization to end the year below the minimum fund balance. And that's just based on the current range that we're looking at. Um, and we just need to know early whether or not that will be approved because that will impact our decisions made from now until the end of the year.
And as, uh, I, I think just putting on to that, you know, we're doing all we can to reduce expenses where possible. I think it's pretty important to also recognize that the challenge we are dealing with and, and have been dealing with is that we're operating in a pandemic and making really difficult cuts in the middle of that. When we're experienced, when we have staff that are, are doing everything they can to keep things going forward, uh, is challenging. So we'll keep looking for those places we can, and what we'll need to do is come back and say to the board, if, if those, uh, we need to know whether we have authorization from the board to, if we need to, to end below that with a plan to restore next year, and we'll come with that next month, or, uh, whether the board says you absolutely need to get us to that minimum fund balance, in which case that would impact how we make our decisions. So, um, so that will, that'll be something we'll have the chance to talk about then. Um, and what, I, I wanted to just go back and, and say one thing. Um, it is really something I think that we should, uh, we, we need to recognize that we are within 16 students right now of our projected enrollment on over 6,000 students. And I've talked to some districts around us that are hundreds of kids off from what they projected. And so, uh, so I think we came in incredibly close and I, and I think that's, uh, that, so, so that's, uh, that's some really, uh, good work on the projecting side in terms of enrollment. And we'll, uh, um, hopefully that stands throughout the rest of the year.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any questions for many of the directors about the budget update?
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, uh, Director Sale, go ahead.
Thank you. Director Taylor, um, I just have one question, Jennifer. You had mentioned that we have lost revenue from lack of facility usage and CTE. You have kind of maybe a ballpark figure or exact number as close as you can about what that figure is?
Well, the total local deposit figure is, is, um, I, we're estimating about a million dollars, but that is made up of hundreds of line items, of budget items. And a lot of those are, so I don't have, I don't have any ballpark on the individual. I mean, I, I could get that for you, but it'll be going through and, and, and running some specific reports on just those budget codes that break it down that way. Um, but, but we did, based on evaluating line by line, we looked at some of the, the larger differences and, and the, that was a lot of the reason for the reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Director Beard, do you have a question?
I have a question. I just wanted to thank Jennifer, because she just started in July, and I just wanted to recognize, like, I, I've been saying this the whole time you've been here, Jennifer. I don't know that I could be doing this job with the same amount, in the same amount of time that you've had to do this. This is a wonderful presentation. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, or Dr. Beard. I appreciate it. Anybody else?
Yes, uh, Director Kike, go ahead.
So I do have a question. It, it might be more for Superintendent Dotson. Um, so before I ask this question, I'm going to provide just a little, uh, review of where we have been and what we talked about since November 10th. So we had a budget discussion on November 10th where it was stated that we wanted to be very transparent about where we are with the budget and that we needed to have trust and build in feedback from the community. We heard from Beth Scholar, who also said that we will want community input about the kinds of things that we value as we talk about planning for these difficult decisions and budget going forward. There was also a comment that at the next meeting we would talk about parameters. I don't believe that happened, so I was waiting for this meeting to hear more about that. Director Killo had asked about the reduction considerations and who would be involved in that. There was a discussion about all of the groups that was just mentioned in this last slide. And there was also, um, a question that I had about the budget committee that we had just established would be part of what the superintendent would be evaluated on in terms of the fiscal stewardship. So my question is, can you please give us an update on the budget committee and when the community feedback will be brought into this process?
So we're still pretty early in our budget development for next year. When we're talking about cuts we've had to make this year, those don't really, because of the timeliness of it, to go through that level of process, we had some work with our ad team on that internally to try to look at what are the cuts we can make now. But we're really going to be coming to you next month with enrollment projections. And then as we go into March, starting to work toward revenue and expenditure projections. And as we go through that process, that's where we have to establish budget committee and really get that opportunity for feedback from the community and from all those groups. So we're early enough now that we're not quite there yet, but I'd see that as February, March work and into April really being the, the prime time for that as we get closer to making the decisions that we have to make around staffing as we look at, uh, uh, because remember, again, 85% of the budget is staffing. So that's where that, uh, feedback process will really become more, um, w- will be rolling out.
So one fo- one follow-up if I could, I remember hearing something about March being a critical month in order to start that planning period for what would happen in terms of the legal requirements around contracts, yes or no, as of May 15th. But don't those decisions have to be made within, like, wi- within the next two months? Essentially, if you're going to hit those milestones to determine who's going to have a contract and who won't next year?
Yes, it become, oops, I see, uh, it looks like we stepped out of screen share. Yeah, it does become in the, in March is, uh, is, is going to be an important time because, uh, really, if you look at, if we were, where it really becomes important is this, we look at if we have to do any, um, any kind of a, a reduction in force, that has to be completed by May 15th and we have to notify TEA by April 15th of that, uh, for our certified staff. So, yes, so that's by March, we really see ourselves needing to be in a place where we're, we have a pretty clu- a pretty good idea of where we're going. So February, March are critical months for that, collecting feedback and coming to the board and saying, okay, we know we need to cut this much, but we then go into April with, uh, in, into April and clear to the end of April to make the final decisions about which cuts are specifically made. And if you go to, if we go to a budget committee too early, the problem is we don't have any information for them to really dig into that. And so this is, there is this compressed timeframe in the next couple of months that we have to make a lot of tough decisions. And so that's, that's what we, in fact, Jennifer and I have a meeting tomorrow to start laying out, uh, that process a little more clearly to make sure that we, we know how we're going to make that happen in the time that we need to get it done.
So I will ask again next month, even if it's just a, we've started recruiting for the budget committee and update on that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, we can do that. Thank you, Director Kike. And, um, yes, and then I just had one comment to kind of, on, uh, what Director Kike just mentioned. It might be helpful to see this in kind of a long-term, not long-term, but it's very compressed, as you mentioned. Uh, and kind of maybe seeing how that lays out and when they'll hit it, certain timeframes. Uh, I know if we don't go to a, a riff situation, that gives us a little more leeway, but I know there's still other steps that need to happen if we're moving people around and shifting. So maybe if we can just see kind of this, a, a short-term plan of when these are coming, that would be great. And I know Jennifer is going to be in front of us at least once a month. So if we incorporate into that potentially, uh, we'll let you all decide how to do that best. So thank you. Any other questions on the budget update before, uh, Jennifer goes into transportation update? Okay, well, let's go ahead and do transportation. Jennifer, go ahead.
Sean, do you have the slide again? Okay. Okay, thank you. So, so Sean's going to bring up a slide. Um, so this is to follow up on a question that, um, Director Kike had at the last meeting, which was a follow-up actually from a presentation that was made last June by Jim Britton before he retired. Um, so, um, so the question was out about transportation feasibility study. And where were we at? We had talked about some issues in the transportation department and about moving forward with an RFP. Um, and we, we found out that we couldn't start that process until we had conducted what's called a feasibility study. Um, and the board presentation in July, the decisions to move forward with the RFP were, were based on increased cost in transportation. We were having to contract a lot of drivers due to shortages, which, which cost more. Um, there is a shortage of drivers, which is ongoing. Um, that is also a national issue, so it's not something that we're dealing with, but our contractors are dealing with that as well. Um, and there were a significant number of grievances that were being filed and there were some concerns about culture issues in the transportation department. Um, so the, the conversation since then has been finding out that we had to do a feasibility study, and that's a five to six-month process, and it typically starts in about February. Um, and so what that, what that does is it really helps to evaluate whether the RFP is the right decision to move forward with. Um, so it, it, it includes the, it includes the, um, conversation. And so it it includes the it includes the conversations and input from the impacted workers. So it establishes a committee that involves the impacted workers. It it results in a report that that includes comments from the impacted workers. And these are requirements that were put in place through R C W. And O S P I has has rules and guidance on that. So as part of going forward with an RFP, once you complete a feasibility study, and that also includes, sorry, it also includes gathering financial information so you know whether it's effective for increased or for cost savings. And once that's all completed, you submit an application to O S P I for approval to move forward with an RFP. So once the feasibility process is done, then you submit an application with your report from the results of the feasibility study. Then they decide whether or not you can move forward with an RFP process for transportation. So Director Kike, and I don't know if that answers all the questions that you had that hadn't been since addressed since July.
Yeah, Director Kike, do you have any comments? We'll let you go first.
No, that is wonderful. Thank you very much for the update.
And there is a slide that you will get that has all this information on it.
Great. And then any other questions? Looks like Director Kilo has a question. Go ahead.
So just your your best guess, if if all dominoes align, what's our timeline to actually, let's just say, a timeline for this process coming to fruition? So we we have, we've actually put out the RFP, we're now searching for vendors.
So the feasibility process would start in February and end in about July or August. And that includes a two month period for the impacted workers to provide comments to the the report that's published. So before it goes to O S P I. So once that happens, then if O S P I approves us to move forward with an RFP process, we would want to start that as soon as possible in the fall because we would want to give the contractors time to submit their proposals and be thoughtful about those proposals. And and as time then to evaluate what the results are.
Okay. Okay.
So that would be in place for, oh, my gosh, you're going to test me on years, twenty-four, twenty-five, if we did select an RFP? Is that right? We're in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, we do feasibility, RFP twenty-three, twenty-four, we would accept it, yeah, I think twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? For Jennifer? Oh, sorry. Director Sale, go ahead. My apologies.
Thanks, Director Taylor. Yes, Jennifer, you had just mentioned in that report something about some cultural issues within the Transportation Department. Could you elaborate on that in some kind of way?
Yes, but yeah, there there was a period of time I wasn't here. So I'm just going to talk about what 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 Jim had shared with me since I was taking over transportation. That there were a lot of grievances being filed, there were a lot of investigations being conducted due to some, I think a lot of it really came down to personality conflicts within between a lot of the staff and some possibly ongoing previous management concerns at the Transportation Department. But I I can't, I'm just speculating based on information I was provided. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Director Sale. Any other questions for Jennifer? Okay, thank you, Jennifer, again, for everything. We appreciate it. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to action items. Superintendent Dotson will present on the second reading and the recommended adoption policy fourteen hundred meeting conduct order of business and quorum.
Yes, President Taylor, members of the board, this policy does lay out how our meetings are conducted. And at the Fall WASDA Conference, we learned that there've been some substantial updates recommended by WASDA based upon some recent case law and a reorganization a bit of this policy. So when you look at the at the markup, it has a lot of markup in it. Not all of it is new, some of it is reorganization, but it really has some changes in the area of quorum, meeting conduct, in order of business, as well as public attendance and comment. And so there's no changes from the first read. We discussed that at the last meeting. I haven't had any changes made and didn't receive any any public feedback on this policy. So I'm happy to answer any questions before you, if you have any.
Great, thank you, Superintendent Dotson. Are there any questions? No, well, if it's okay, I will entertain a motion to approve this policy.
Do you do you need a do you need a motion or can we just go to vote?
I'm sorry, you're right. We can go just to vote. This is the yes. All those in favor of approving policy fourteen hundred meeting conduct order of business and quorum, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, great, thank you, Sean. We will now move on to approval of a legislative priority.
So I'll invite Director Kike in to join me on this. We sent out a set of recommended legislative priorities that particularly focus in some of the areas that you had identified. And Director Kike, do you want to share thoughts there for the board?
I only have one screen tonight, so. Okay, so really what it comes down to, we decided to consolidate into the two major areas that really deserve the most focus right now. These are based off of definitely based off of the things that we talked about with respect to the General Assembly and looking at the WASDA priorities, prioritizing our top ones there. But just throughout the last year, things we've talked about, we've heard even from our students. And this is where we landed in two major areas. The big one is equitable and stable funding that reflects current reality. This is essentially a recognition that the pandemic is still going. So we took our legislative priorities from last year and really didn't have to make too many adjustments to them because a lot of the things that we talked about last year still apply. What we do, what we've learned, though, throughout the last year, and we just talked about that with respect to the budget, is that the pandemic has created such an instability in our typical way that we're funded. All of the school districts have been asked to fund things that we don't receive money for. And it's based off of these formulas that are probably worse than an act of Congress to try to shift to. But we will talk about that when we get to legislative updates. So there's some, maybe some positive news coming. But one of the ones that we, Sean and I talked about, sorry, Superintendent Thompson and I talked about a little bit, was enrollment stabilization. So budget stability was one of our WASDA priorities. This one is, as I'll talk about shortly, this is definitely a focus for most of the state. So it's a priority for us, but there's others that actually rise to a little bit higher. So we were kind of going back and forth on whether we should even bother to include that or so we might just leave it as enrollment stabilization, revising the transportation funding formula. This was a big focus last year as well. Once again, on that idea of having funding that reflects current reality. There's another bill that I'll speak to about that later. We heard earlier from Jennifer with respect to the the concerns about the money lost within our levy differential. So eliminating inequities and access to levy resources. This was one of our top two WASDA priorities, so that exists in here. Fully funding special education services. This is something that Superintendent Dotson contributed and spoke about the, you know, kind of the differential with the enrichment levy and looking to have that more fully funded within basic education. So funding, huge. The second one is equity, health and safety to support student success. We could pretty much roll this all together into the concept of student mental health, social and emotional support. So the two big items here are to fund behavioral support services, social emotional learning, and then updating the prototypical school funding formula to structure a staffing model that promotes equitable outcomes for all students. There is actually quite a bit crossover between these two, you know, funding and support and how you're able to best serve your students is related to the amount of resources that you have. So that's what we have for our lunch priorities to present.
Great, thank you, Director Kike and Superintendent Dotson. Are there any questions from the board members on those legislative priorities? Okay, this is something we need to approve as a board today? Yes, okay, all those in favor of approving the legislative priorities as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. Priorities are approved. Now, Sean Bastone will present on waiver of the community outreach graduation requirement for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And also recommended adoption, is that what we're doing here today?
This is, yeah, yes, you're 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 approving the continuation of the waiver for the class of twenty-two or the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So in your packet, you received a memo that really does recommend that continuation of the thirty hours of community outreach that's part of the graduation requirements. Similar to last year, access, we're recognizing that access to community outreach opportunities are really continuing to be a barrier for our students. And whether that has to do with business and community organizations with just increased restrictions, maybe not even wanting to honor some of those partnerships sometimes, or just wanting to be more COVID safety oriented, or even student family concerns for their own personal safety and well-being. That's come up a lot. So I did have the chance to meet with administrators, school counselors, registrars. And I actually have been receiving some emails on this topic as well from students really requesting this recommendation. So we took a look at some data and recognized that that data indicates the majority of our students who are otherwise on track for graduation won't be able to meet this requirement. And again, there are several of those barriers that we've outlined that are applicable to many students. In fact, maybe some of our students here can help us better understand that. One of the things that we want to make completely sure is there's definitely no question to the value and importance of community outreach. But the impacts in a COVID environment and a pandemic are really impacting access for kids at this. So that's why we're recommending this continuation of this waiver for this school year. And we'll continue to reevaluate as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bastone. Let's see, let's, I will go ahead and take any requests for comments, questions. Director Kike, go ahead.
Thank you. My only, it's it's not a question, it's just a comment about the cascading effect that this will have. So we have seniors this year who don't have any requirement. So at the same time, in a cohort model, we have freshmen, sophomore and juniors who are also probably not accumulating any of those community service hours. So I don't see a scenario where we're going to come a year from now and have the current juniors not also say I, we're not able to do it. So I know we talked about this in a previous meeting, and I'm not sure what the right answer is if rather than not, not today, but in the future to say, we've got to figure if we really value this, if it's something that we want to not have go away permanently, then maybe we can look into a, you know, a ramping back up. So shifting it down to twenty hours or something and giving students plenty of notice. So they're not waiting until their junior year and they haven't done anything because they didn't think that they had the requirement. So that's my only concern.
I appreciate that feedback and counselors of students have both said, you know, maybe we could make it a partial requirement to start thinking about how to work that in over students that maybe haven't had full access. So if things were better to go next year, maybe we take that thirty divided by and say for this class, maybe we only, maybe we only offer five or six, something that allows us the opportunity to catch back up. That is a very important, a very important point. And I think our group was thinking about ways we could help catch that back up. So thank you for that comment. Director Bear.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Director Kike. I was on mute.
I'm going across my screen too.
That's great. Director Beard, go ahead.
We've talked about that, we've also talked about this before, the idea that Brian Hardcastle has about, you know, community service internship, you know, really what it is is about. It's about giving back to the community, but also exposing students to other ideas or other, you know, just options. And so I wouldn't mind, you know, you know how I like to just blow things up. But it would be great to rethink what this is. If we're prioritizing it, rethinking about what this could be for our students, what the point of it is. And and if it's a, if it's internship opportunities or, you know, connect connecting students with with people in the community for community service, or is it about connecting students with opportunities for them to learn about different industries or different jobs or whatever that may be? I think that would be a great way to to think about this rather than you have community service. Oh, and you have and you have internship hours that you need to do, you know, just maybe thinking about it in that way to really benefit the student. And if and and if that sounds like to, I'm looking at Mia and Talia, now you can't tell that I'm looking at you, but I am. If you guys have input on what this could be or what this might be, I'd be interested in you guys too.
Thank you, Director Beer. Let's see, Director Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Director Taylor. I just want to, well, a couple of things. I would like to just go ahead and agree with Director Kike on on her excellent point about you're kind of being a backlog with with the hours. And then also just coupling on to what Director Beard had said about rethinking the opportunities. And I'll give you a good example of one way that my son, Zachary, who graduated this past year, got around that because he needed to have those hours. And he started a nonprofit called Helping Schools Three Sixty. We raise money for schools, public schools. And he worked on that all summer and got friends involved and was able to do and get those hours he needed. So Director Beard raises a good point. There are different ways to go about these things and rethink doing them than just a traditional lens that we view them. And I would be happy, the the our nonprofits still exist. I still am the president of it, even though Zach has moved on. He's home on break right now. He still will help and contribute. But it's there to keep working and keep raising money. And it'll be there for not only my children to keep working on as well, but any other student who would like to perhaps intern. So it's not just what I'm doing, but I'm sure there's other folks in the community who may have something like that or other nonprofits that our kids could get involved in and do. It does, it just doesn't have to be the same tradition. And I think if we've learned anything through COVID, we've had to learn that we've had to rethink how we look at things in general. So I just wanted to put that out there so you know that there are different ways to approach this. And I was very proud of my son, of course, from his mother, but at the same time, he had the wherewithal to be ingenuity, ingenuity with something that was completely out of the ballpark. I was shocked when he came to me and said, I'd like to do this. I need my hours. And so we did it.
Great, thank you, Director Sale. Talia, go ahead. And then Amaya will get to you.
Amaya, do you want to go first or are we good? Okay, okay, um, yeah, I just, I wanted to say as a high school student, community service hours is oddly one of the the weirdest graduation requirements to deal with. I I think it's just because kids are, I don't know, it just seems like a, like, oh, oh, God, why? Like, kind of like a why, like, I don't think we understand why we need to do community service hours. And I think that makes it harder for kids to be like, okay, well, I should do this. Also, I want, I got about like a hundred something hours of community service, and that was through my high school's theater, because I do light technicians, theater work. So and I had a bunch of seniors come to me this year before they knew about. So um, and I had a bunch of seniors come to me this year before they knew about the. The waving of our community service hours and they're like, oh my god, I don't know how to get, I don't know how to get this and I I don't have time. And I was like, oh my god, just come and be a light tech for me for like, like one play and then you'll be good. Anyway, so I think there's just the moral of the story is is that. A lot of kids don't know the opportunities they have around them for community service that are just like an after school program. That they'll have to be there for like two hours after school. And, you know, I just, I think it would be easier if it was. More. Known to students and especially known like why we need to do it in the first place. I don't know if that makes any sense, but yeah.
I think it does.
Yeah.
Thank you. Amaya, go ahead. You want to go?
Uh, yes, I just want to say that uh, it, that's a good idea, like you can, there's like other things you can do than just like. The suggestional, tradis- traditional ways. Yeah, there's some really good things you can do. And I was like thinking, because like on against have like the healthcare. So like, we can like, like volunteer and I know probably not like right now, so, well, maybe it is a good time to do it. I don't know, I guess it depends. But I want to be a veterinarian, so like I would, I would, I would like prefer doing like internships there. Then like doing, like helping out, doing like other things, you know. So it just really depends on like the student, what they want to do in the future. So I think looking at it in different ways is definitely a good place to start.
Great, thank you. Yes, Talia has one more thing to say, I think. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to what Amaya said because I, I'm, I'm really into the arts. So my, what I want to go into profession is around, um, like filmmaking and theater. So that was a, like a carry on to Amaya wants to work in nursing and medical. So yeah, I like the idea of internships and doing what is our passion or what we want to think is our passion for now at least. So I wanted to add that.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, I'd like to add one thing real quick. I'll come back to you, Dr. Sale, for sure, don't worry. I have reservations about waiving this completely, for sure. Um, I hope maybe we could scale it back. I'm going to, you know, I won't get caught up in that, but I like what the suggestions are. That we move to at least towards reestablishing this next year. I have concerns about what this means down the line. Meaning we've established that we we will waive this and. You know, I don't want, you have to tell a good story and you get a wave, I don't want it turning into that. So we have to figure out a way to ramp it back up. And a way to do that, I think, to engage them more is kind of what Talia was saying to make it, why are we doing this? And how does it relate to me? And how can I make it better for the things I'm interested in versus maybe checking a box and and giving some community service back to the work? Well, that's great. And that's nice. Um, I don't think that's what was meant by this requirement. We wanted to, you know, get you thinking for yourselves and engage yourself in the community. And figure out how that's going to mean for you going forward. And I like some of the ideas that have been discussed here tonight. So Director Sale, go ahead.
Well, you kind of took the words out of my mouth, Director Taylor. I I couldn't get to my hand quick enough to put it down. But I just wanted to thank our student reps for their great comments and I think that they're spot on. And I I really think the word is is meaningful. I think they're looking for meaningful things to do as opposed to just go knock out a few hours. So I guess I I did have a question in there and that was to the students, Talia and Amaya, I'm gonna get that wrong. How does that look for you as far as communication? How would you want that communicated to you as students? Instead of. Being told, oh, you need to do these hours. What, how would that look to you? You you asked for more of them. A better, how, you asked why we have to do it. And I guess I'm asking you, how can that be communicated better to you all?
Um, this is just something I thought of on the spot. So I'm a link leader for my high school. I'm assuming, I'm assuming you know a link leader is someone. And I think at the very beginning, introducing that straight to the freshman, like right away from another student, from a student to a student. That that would be very helpful. Because I mean, when you're a teenager and you have an adult saying, hey, you need to do this requirement, it's like not as interesting than. You're like in upper class and being like, hey, this is a really cool opportunity, community service hours, this is why we do it. I think that would be a good way to implement that. Definitely through. Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, and I don't know if Amaya has anything to add.
Yeah, I was thinking that we can like do groups, like here's what I'm thinking. Like, like healthcare things, you can have like a Google classroom. And people can like do updates, like some opportunities inside the community that like people inside of the healthcare would be interested in or something like that. Or like for like arts, you know. Plays, movies, stuff like that, that they can like, get like updates, like, hey, stuff like this is happening inside the community. Maybe if you guys want to check it out, you guys can like do that, like for each type of like subject or thing they want to get into. I think that would be a pretty good idea, at least like for people who want to join like certain. Career fields, they can join that group and they can get some opportunities to do that.
Thank you. I think that was probably a great answer. Laurie's smiling, so I know that's kind of, and those were good answers for just coming up with both of you. I really liked the idea that Talia said too, that. Yeah, teachers or a counselor or your homeroom teacher tells you, you gotta do this, but it's different. And if a junior pulls you aside, hey, you've got to do these hours and here's kind of a cool way if you're interested in this, or you find them in that group or that trade group. Or or the you want to, you're interested in and like, hey, if you want to do this, here's a cool opportunity. So great input, thank you. I saw Mr. Batstone writing down some things as well too there for sure. And I'm gonna look forward to Director Kikinen to holding us to this to remind us about this, that we don't forget this conversation. And find ourselves in the same situation next year. So Darby, we'll work on that together. Okay, any other comments about the waiver for the graduation requirements for community outreach? There is no objections. I would like to go ahead and then ask all those in favor of approving. The waiver for the community outreach graduation requirement for the school twenty one twenty two school year. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those opposed? No, okay. Great, that passes. Thank you, Sean. We appreciate that. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Dotson, go ahead.
Yes, and so I'll be brief in my part and then I'm going to turn it over to Sean Batstone and Andrew Kelly Batstone to talk to you a little bit about Panorama. But I do want to start with, following up, at our last board meeting, we had the student board rep question. And it was around what support our students needed to be most successful this year. And they came with some really great information. That led us to say, hey, we should probably loop back and connect into schools and say, what do we do with that information now? And I just want to let you know that, that, that our principal, high school principals did meet with our student board reps. So I think you both got the opportunity to to meet with the principals and share some of that feedback. I got a message from Mr. Myers the other day saying that there was some great learning out of that. So Talia, there was one of the things that I think you guys got the chance to talk about, maybe you can extend, was about non-gender bathrooms. And found out that there is some, there is, that does exist at Black Hills High School. Maybe there's some communication around that can help make sure students who. Who would need that up, need that option, know it's there for them. And I, I know Mr. Broom had shared some feedback with me or had said he might be able to be here to share some feedback on his own. But I think that I'm seeing he, he fell off here earlier and maybe we're having a tech issue there, but I don't have him on right now. But would invite our student board reps to share if there's anything that you want to share back about your conversation with your principals.
Um, yeah, I would like to share. Um, yeah, so Mr. Myers reached out to me and was like, hey. So your comments were amazing. And he's like, there was one I forgot about. He's like, that I really wanted to talk about. And I'm like, shoot, I can't remember it either. So that was kind of both on our part. Um, but yeah, the gender neutral bathrooms, he did tell me about. And I thought that the, that specific bathroom was for only teachers. So, and a lot of other students thought that as well. So I. I hadn't told other people, but I I told some, some of my non-binary friends about it. And, and they were like, I, they were like really excited but confused. It was, it was kind of interesting. And I actually took one of them to, to the said bathroom. And they were like, alright, okay, like, okay, this is what we're doing. So it was actually really nice to help with that issue and learn about that. For it to spread to other people throughout the school. So I, that was, it made me feel very good. And I'm sure other people as well. It was very good. Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, anything that you want to add to that or?
Yes, I, um, with my principal and we talked about some things that like. We talked about like, um, how like the restrooms, the non-gendered, the non-binary restrooms. They're like, it's being worked on. And like, there was like, he told me like some reasonings behind that. And he did a whole meeting, so like working on that and like seeing where some ways we can like. Leave it open and not have it locked all the time. We're also like. We were also talking about like future plans about like. It's not assembly. Uh, well, I guess it is sort of, there's a different word for it. There's not an assembly, but we're planning on doing some things for. Mark fifth or King Junior Day. So. We're planning on doing that. Well, I can like help like with it. And yeah, I'm pretty excited on doing that. Some of the things we talked about. I think. Uh, we were just going over like the responses I got and like some ways that he can like help out and like see what he can do. But yeah, we met a few times and we talked about the responses and stuff like that. So it's good.
Thank you both for bringing those ideas and and for working with the principals on how we move things forward with that. And with that, I want to, uh, just after that, I want to transition over to a discussion of some of our Panorama data. And for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Batstone and Miss Kelly Batstone.
Fantastic. As a reminder, three priority areas this year, educational equity, multi-tiered systems of support, which is inclusive of social emotional learning or SEO. And staff collaboration, right? Really recognizing those three focus areas. So Panorama data really helps us understand the perceptions of students and families, right? So that we can start better understanding SEL and equity needs. So tonight, Andrew's here to talk more about the survey data we have collected. So Andrew, a big thank you for taking time out of that schedule to help us better understand what we have for us.
All right, thank you for inviting me. Good evening. Thank you, Board, for being here to receive some information. So the, the slides that you received and the slides that I'm. Uh, running through tonight, it's a lot. It's more to model the process in a, in a speedy way. Kind of like when you're watching a video, but you watch it faster. It's really more to model what administrators will be helping their staff dive into, into their buildings. So I'm just front loading with that. So there's not frustration of being able to digest and dive into the data. It's more to model the process that will be happening at the building level. And then I'll highlight some features and resources and tools along the way. But good evening. And I don't know how, how you guys make it this far into the day. My eyes are so blurry, so I'm going to be putting on my glasses. I'm Andrew Kelly Batstone. I'm an assistant principal at Black Hills High School and part-time SEL coordinator for the district. So this is really exciting data. I I'm excited to look at it from a district perspective. I'm excited to walk through it with principals next week to make sure they have the tools and confidence and access to go through the process with their staff. And then I'm really excited to jump into the Black Hills data and see where we're at. Because most schools have set goals around SEL and perception data is one data point to inform your progress. It's somewhat new for us to use Panorama, so we don't have the trend data that you would usually have over the course of time. But I'm excited to show you what we do have and happy to answer questions, but just know that we're not doing a deep dive. I'm doing a quick skim. And then if you would like more, either in a work session or just to phone a friend and go through it, I'm happy to do that. I also want to say, I'm super excited about the legislative priority for the health and safety legislation component and SEL emphasis. And was totally taking notes about the community connection requirement. I know that's not officially what it's called, but I'm calling it community connection. Took notes there since I have the luxury of also getting to be at the building level. So that's exciting. But I also see it as a tiered, part of our tiered systems of support. So you've got that tier one, that universal layer where everybody gets it. So I loved the recommendation for Link Crew to really model and give examples and sell that message. And then that tier two could be the examples and access, whether it's from a homeroom or school counselors or a Google classroom. To show all the different ideas for people who are exploring different career interest areas. And that career interest survey that's taken through Naviance might help spur some interest. And then for us to connect those opportunities in the communities with that seems really exciting. And then that tier three is our school counselors do pre-registration. The goal is to meet with every student. So there should be individual conversations and idea sharing there. So I think we have a lot of opportunity to fix. The awareness and to increase excitement around creating those community connections. So. Get it started, Andrew. Okay. Panorama is a program that we use to deploy the survey data. So it's perception survey. And perception survey is always interesting because it's opinion, it's how people are feeling. But that's really important in the work of social emotional. Learning and support. It is important to try to learn as much as we can about how students are feeling. And we do that in teacher observation and interaction. We look at data on academics, attendance and behavior. We have student self-referrals, friends refer friends. We have parent referrals. We have SEL lessons that are sequenced through our K twelve system. But the perception survey is an opportunity, and I would say there's pockets of increased opportunity. Because I would love to have more participation from our school anyway. Not all voices are in there. So we definitely have more work to do, but it's the universal way to get everybody's opinion on any given time of day. So that's the cool part about a perception survey. This is just reminding us of those tiered interventions of support. And that SEL is a component, it's academics, behavior and social emotional learning that we're, we're working with. So who responded to the survey and what did we ask him? We had a family survey and then we had student surveys. The student surveys spanned grades three through twelve. This is a slide that gives an example of the topics that those grade levels. Or the families were asked or what we were measuring. It was kind of nice, or it is nice to have Panorama, because prior to Panorama, schools used Survey Monkey. Google surveys. It's really hard to, from a novice level, pull together. Viewable data. So the, there's a luxury in Tumblr having access to the Panorama program. But it does come at a cost.
Andrew, I don't think we have the slides up into share. Could you give, try that again and see if it's, if we can get those to pop up? Perfect. All right.
Thank you. Zoom and or webinar faux pas. Darn it, sorry about that. Okay, this was the slide I was referencing. I was looking at a great slide you didn't get to. I apologize for that. So the topics, and the topics will come back later in this similar form in the survey data. The survey data is kind of coordinated in. The survey data is kind of coordinated into the topics. And then each topic can be explored with uh, a click of a button. And drilling down into the specific questions that were used to build that certain topic. And so I'll show you some slides that kind of represent what I'm talking about. So here were our response rates. Certainly, like I was just saying. This is uh, with survey data, more is always better. So I don't think we'd ever be satisfied until it's a hundred percent. And we certainly have way more than a little over a thousand families, but this is the voices in the current data that we have. It's always important when you're working with any kind of data, whether it's perception data or not, demographics are really important. It helps you identify what voices are not in the room and whether there's disproportionality in different areas. So I I did have some feedback from families specifically saying, why do you, why are you asking me this stuff? Uh, and that is why, so that we can, especially when it's a. A a lower percentage than we would like, representation of our total number. It's at least good to look and say, well, did we get some representation across the board? Or are we missing a grade level completely? It just is information, because anytime you're looking at averages, it's very important to know exactly what that average is alluding to. Especially if you're in a position to make an action plan or dedicate resources or time to it. So demographic data would look like this. So this is where it's the warning of a lot of numbers or and information is gonna flash in front of you. And I know you're not gonna have time to be able to dive in, but it's more about what the buildings are gonna be doing. So this is the district summary of the data. It'll be really interesting to see from the building level. What their response rates are. What voices were represented and then to look at their population, either using their OSPI report card. Or um, their Skyward reports to to note and be aware of. Whose voices were represented in the survey and whose were not. We also asked parents, um, so this is the second slide of more demographic data. We wanted to know who was filling out the survey. Uh, lots of moms. And then we wanted to know kind of where our uh, socioeconomic perspective was. Because there are some questions in the survey that asked about access and opportunity. And it's important that we have a broad representation uh, from different family perspectives. This is the fun part. I can get lost in panorama for a long time. And that's why next week we're dedicating some time with principals to help them use their time efficiently. Because as we all know, there isn't uh, extra time right now, especially with. Um, supporting students and teachers during the school day, we can't get lost in the data. We have to use our time efficiently and know what we're looking at and know how to um. Dive deeper to make sure that number means what we think it means. And then to look at uh, our school improvement plans, our current action plans. To help us stay focused and then set a goal of action towards an area that we're already working on, just so we don't. Get scattered. So this for every survey is kind of what the data looks like. It's divided by those or organized by those topics. And then the topics are sorted by percent favorable response. So for the family survey. The highest favorable favorable response was barriers to engagement. Now this one's kind of a double negative. Um, so you would interpret this as the barriers to engagement. Seventy-five percent of responders said it's not, they don't, they were not experiencing barriers to engagement. But that still means there's twenty-five percent of people who might be, so. Oh, before I move on, here's more. Still the family survey, still the topics, so it goes from most favorable to least favorable. It's very tempting to jump right to the the lowest one. Because those numbers are, you know, they they jump out at you. But for each of these. A principal should probably dive into each one, pull out some highlights for their building, leadership team or their staff. And then help be able to interpret those numbers or to highlight a top three. Because if they only have an hour with their staff, they're gonna need to narrow down this time. We have fifteen minutes. So, right, you'd need to focus. So principals will dive into the data, work with their leadership team and then hopefully take their top three. Um, areas of awareness to their staff or use some ACT time to dive into this data. And I'm gonna show you a deeper dive, but a couple surveys from now. So we did four different surveys, a family survey. An SEL survey but for two different grade levels and then an equity survey, just secondary level. So you'll you'll start to notice a pattern for each one of the surveys. And then for each one of the surveys, there's a link at the bottom, just in case you love data like I do and you wanna dive into it. Uh, if you don't have access to the slides, we'll make sure you get it and we can share it. It can be shared with the community. There's not private data in here. Um, it's all uh, anonymous, the student IDs are protected. Uh, but the diving into the links lets you open up any one of these questions to dive deeper. And like I said, we'll do that later. So for example, the SEL. Response for grades three, five. It says K-five up here, because panorama offers questions for K-five. We elected to um, survey grades three through five. There's the demographic breakdown. The buildings would again look to make sure. Um, there there's a representative voice for all of their demographic areas and then they would dive into the data. And again, it looks like the family data identified by topic, percent most favorable at the top. And then some of the questions are nationally normed, so you'll notice some some uh, identifiers over on the right-hand side. So this is pretty cool. Overall, for the elementary group, really high in supportive relationships. That's really been a focus of all of us this year. Uh, and so it's really cool to see and the elementary should be really excited about this, because I know it's one of their goals. And on top of that, it's substantiated by being really high in the nationally norm percentage, so that's really impressive. So there should always be celebrations in data as well and not just going to the areas of improvement. So going, still going through. The second side of the topics, there's more of them. This is that second page. This is an interesting note, so we're down lower areas of favorability. For challenging feelings, but according to what's happening nationally, it's actually not. An alarming amount, so again, buildings will stay focused based on their school improvement plans. And their goals around SEL, so they should hone in on those learning objectives. That are already connected to their current goals and then use some components to inform future planning. They dive into that data by using the link that's at the bottom of the slide. Six twelve data, same process for those six twelve campuses. Or those secondary campuses, rather. Each building will be able to see their own demographic breakdown. This is a summary of what it looks like for this grade band at the district level. And it's interesting, in different spots, there's uh, despite the lower percentage of respondents from the secondary level. Because the elementary is really kicked it out of the ballpark. Many of them even hit eighty percent. You can see from the secondary level, these are the student grade level responses. And we're we're, we haven't hit the ceiling of twenty percent yet, so certainly an easy goal there to increase representation. And then looking at our um, student, uh, some other demographics on, do we have all voices in the room? Data is formatted similarly. This also allows buildings to coordinate and collaborate together. So that if they're working on a similar goal, it's easy to share data, because it looks similar. This one and is uh, interesting, because it's the same format we've looked at, same data display. Divided or assigned by topic, organized by percent favorable. So the top favorable thing is supportive relationships at the secondary level. But nationally, it's it's not looking so great. And so despite it being the top favorable. Data point, I know that most of the secondary campuses are working on this, because we're trying to rebuild relationships. Since we've been remotely with our students for so long, we're working on that in our homerooms, in our SEL lessons and trying to build that. So it's important to have a data point to know where we're at, so that we can keep growing. More topics from the secondary level as it goes from most favorable to least favorable. So certainly you can see some other areas of that the building principals would want to dive into. To learn a little bit more about what that means. And then our final fourth survey was equity and the equity, equity and inclusion survey was only given to grade six through twelve. There were some extra questions asked about um, language spoken at home. Uh, same as far as grade level and gender that was asked in the other. Surveys and then in this one, it had two layers of. Of race and ethnicity, one that is directly pulled from Skyward, because students use their student ID number. And then the other was a self-identifier. So this definitely jumped out as a slide of interest um, from a district perspective that should also be of interest. And I presume will be at the at the building level as well, as why are these numbers so off? So I'll give you a a chance to peek at this one a little longer, because this definitely was interesting to me. The students identified response over on the left and the Skyward connected data on the right. For the same respondents. So there's a lot of data to dive into, so the equity specific data has three topics. And so certainly sense of belonging jumps out. We're working on relationships, sense of belonging. Could definitely be stronger, so I've been telling you this whole time, it's important to dive deeper. Uh, so I wanna show you what that looks like, so that I can imagine at Black Hills anyway, we're definitely gonna dive into that sense of belonging. So as principals go through their data and come up with some survey insights, they're gonna dive deeper. So before we get to that sense of belonging, for each of the surveys, buildings should be taking some insights away from their. Family survey. So from a district perspective, the takeaway from the family survey, there's many. But a big easy one was that families didn't know what we're doing in the schools to support social emotional learning. They said, I'm not really sure. So. We need to promote what we're doing to support social emotional learning in the schools. So that was really uh, important to find out and that's a low-cost, high-yield. Uh, response that we can do right away, so that was good insight. I'm gonna skip to the sense of belonging. Uh, from the equity survey, so as you saw previously, but I, when I'm seeing numbers, forget them. So thirty percent of our secondary students reported feeling like they are valued members of the school community. In the sense of belonging section of the equity survey, only thirty-six percent. Certainly, we are not happy with that percentage. So when you click on one of those links for any specific section, it break, it opens up specific questions. So for this topic, these were the four questions in that section that were combined. To the total of thirty-six percent. So when buildings look at their responses. I would presume um, that it would stand out. Question, how connected do you feel to adults at your school? That's gonna jump out to buildings, twenty-three percent. And we've been working so hard on it, so it's also hard for buildings to look at data sometimes, because it can be tough. But it's just important to make sure uh, to monitor your progress and to know we have more work to do. So in diving into that connectedness to adults at school. It, these favorable responses do not even count those that mark in the middle. So on this one, there is a lot in the middle, but panorama doesn't count that um, somewhat, the kind of neutral in the middle. Um, on any of the favorable responses, so that when it says favorable, it's really. It's really up there. It's not wishy-washy in the middle. So some of the strategies that the campuses will use in responding to their data that they wanna focus on or that jump out as concern. Uh, there's a variety of different things in panorama that are really easy for them just to click and utilize. So they don't have to spend a ton of time with data analysis. So in that regard, it's a really. User-friendly tool, but we're gonna make sure they um, are aware of all the options when they meet in levels next week. So for example, if I was diving in, because woo, I wanna really wo- work on um. That sense of connectedness to school, so I would pull up out of all the schools, come out of the district data and pull up Black Hills High School. And then it would give me this summary. And it's gonna help schools. Go to their, into their um, MTSS mind. And look at the three different ways that they can set an action plan towards improvement. The universal response. Um, or wow, what, who are those kids in the red? And and do we have an opportunity to identify who they might be? Or explore more about these individual results to see what we can do to strengthen them. So following an action plan format, using um, there's recently been introduced through our ACT time through student learning. Uh, a data analysis protocol for them to review data and develop smart goals. And then the I and the E include the equity components. Uh, SEL is important to follow an academic goal-setting process. And that's what our teachers are gonna um, be working with their administrators to do. Uh, they have available tools. This is kind of a picture of a panorama playbook where. To explain a little bit more about what that means, when they're diving into data, whether it's this much detail, like, oh my gosh, we really wanna work on self-efficacy. But I don't have time to do a lot of research in in finding tools. The panorama, because we already um. Are uh, have a contract with them, we have access to all of their tools. So you can search by any one of those areas of interest or need, whether it's uh, prevention or intervention. And it pops up some um. Tools for the school or the teacher to use. There's also our Gail E-library and all of the SEL curriculums that we use. Um, K through twelve. So bringing it back out of the building up to the district level, there are certainly some things that. Uh, from the district lens that we need to do to support the campuses and the first and foremost thing would be. Uh, professional development and coaching and support for our leaders, so that they can walk through this process with their team. With spending more time diving into the data and not doing that brush, that broad stroke that you guys are receiving this evening. Uh, continuing the MTSS development is key. Um, that's our key to creating uh, equitable services and coordinating support across the district. And the district has made a commitment to that. Sharing results with families, being trans- uh, transparent with the data, improving communication. Uh, certainly, when rolling out something new this year with someone new doing it. Uh, there's uh, improvement in uh, areas that are easily identifiable there that will be taken care of in the spring. And then as far as the buildings, when they're revisiting, reflecting and revising their action plans. It's gonna be really important, especially going through the budget process to know, some of them are nervous about, like, well, we're relying on some of these resources. For our tiers of intervention and support. And uh, certainly some of the buildings are a little nervous about what that means moving forward in uh, supporting their work. So that could be anything from the panorama tool itself. Uh, there's our um, substitute Senate Bill fifty-thirty that uh. Is really exciting, I think, because it kind of presses um. On our districts and school counseling teams to do the work that they've been wanting to do. Um, and just get kind of side-swiped in the daily crisis response of different things, but developing a comprehensive school counseling program. Because that would be a tier one, universal support for our social emotional learning opportunities across our district. Uh, will we have some of our um. Partners, our community partners and will there, what will the support be for that continued uh, curriculum and training? And access to evidence-based prevention and intervention tools, because those are necessary in sustaining. Our tiered system of support. And you made it to the end and it's eight eleven. And one of the things I didn't remember to say, because I was so excited about the conversation prior was uh shifting to a Zoom meeting, we were student learning was so excited to give you your hydration stations tonight. Because you you spend so long in these meetings, we had hydration stations for you. So now we'll just need to figure out uh a delivery time. I don't know what the food delivery service is, but we could figure out. You can drop it on your doorstep, leave it at the district office for you to pick up. I'm not telling you what's inside it. It's a very cute water bottle. I'll tell you that much. Um, but we want to take care of our school board members. Uh, we appreciate you so much. Thank you for still staring at a computer tonight and listening and at a lightning speed. The cool data that uh your buildings starting with administrators are going to start doing next week. And then hopefully through act time or staff meetings or leadership team meetings, your building principals are going to jump into that data uh and continue uh revising their action plans to really know for sure that they're meeting the needs of our students. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Mr. Batstone. Any uh questions from board members or comments on the panorama survey? Let's see, Director Kike, go ahead.
Hello, I'll try and make it um super fast, just kind of a a comment. So thank you very much for all of this great information. I did have a chance to skim through um ahead of time. So one thing um significantly caught my eye. And so I was hoping you could remind me um now who who all took this survey, students and families as well?
Yes, I think I'd this may have been one of the screens that I didn't get to to share. Yes. So families were were sent the survey grades three through five for social emotional learning. And then six through twelve had had social emotional learning and equity.
Okay, um, so the thing that caught my eye was the income breakdown. So uh it looked like with the responses, there was about fifty five percent of the family responses that were a hundred thousand dollars or greater. A quick assessment of Tom Waterman and family adjusted incomes about sixty nine thousand. Um, so that's an interesting perspective with everything you were saying about the demographics and using that lens of who took that survey and what that might look like for that particular information. Um, that's a pretty big disparity when it comes to income and representation of families. So uh we'll be interested to hear later on as you're breaking all this information down, what you learn on those deep dives.
Yeah, it will be interesting what how it breaks down per building like it. Does that spread stay similar across the district or does it um? Is it very different for our different campuses? Because I think that will also lend itself to what can we do differently to uh get a more representative voice at the table when we're we're seeking feedback and asking for input? Because I think this was sent out to families uh in email and on social media. So I think there's, I think we we got to get creative. Uh, buildings themselves also send it out because I think sometimes families might be a little more inclined to to respond to something from their buildings. And so I do think that helped a couple campuses increase their representative voices. But yes, all of those things. I love diving into demographics.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Director Kike, in um Director Beer. Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for doing this work. More data means more work, but uh what I've been concerned about is that the only data we have are test score data. And I know that this could be hot, that this could be hard to see. Sometimes we get scared to look at the data, but we don't know how well we're doing or what we can improve on to get better if we don't have it. So I I know it's very vulnerable. I'm I'm sure our staff are feeling very vulnerable right now. And I just want to I want to acknowledge this is, this is just the first step for us to serve our students better and to know what's working and what's not working. And that there's not, there's not judgment that that this is all part of the process. And I love that we're using Panorama. And I love all the tools that we have with it. Yes, it does cost money. I don't know how we do our work without knowing what's working and what's not working. And so thank you for dedicating your time to this and and for our staff dedicating their time to looking at what this data means.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment about the vulnerability because if you're not used to looking at perception data coming from how people are feeling, it is hard to ask and receive wholeheartedly how someone is feeling and trying not to take it personally. So that is something that uh will be, will pay attention to when we talk to principals next week as far as uh supporting their staff and really setting the stage to being ready to receive the information because they are working so hard and putting their hearts out there that I definitely wouldn't want this to be something that felt like their heart got stepped on. And sometimes when you're asking, especially uh young adolescents, um, sometimes that's hard hearing what they're feeling in that moment when you felt like it could be something different. But it's important to get a baseline. And then we just use that baseline as checkpoints. Hopefully we get to either continue using Panorama or something similar where we get some trend data so that it's not one alarming data point that uh really has an emotional impact. So that that definitely is some work we need to do to support our staff and proceeding with this work. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Beer. Any other last comments? All right. Thank you again, Mr. Batstone. We will now move on to board committee reports. Um, if you hadn't noticed, Director Sale has dropped off. Apparently there is a power outage out there in the Delphi area. So good luck to everyone in there. Hopefully she'll be back with us um later. If not, we will certainly figure that out. So we probably won't hear from Lori on the Equity Advisory Committee update. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, I will not be doing a WIA update so that leaves us with Director Pakenin and our legislative update, which probably would take up our time anyway for other two. So go ahead, Director Pakenin, when you're ready.
Yes, it is. Um, it is that time of year. So the legislative session started on Monday. Um, once again, it is a short session, so that means things move much more quickly because it's not going into the full biennium budget planning process. Um, essentially, we're looking at state agency policy and supplemental budget um requests that come in. Governor put his supplemental budget uh forward at the end of December, within December. And this first week, um, the majority of the hearings are primarily uh budget focused and that they are um having the different agencies to include, you know, the K twelve system come in and kind of react to the governor's budget and um start to look at the policy bills that would be coming in in and amongst all of those things. So there's a tremendous number of K twelve bills that will come through any given session, even a short one. And so one of the main reasons why we do a legislative priority, it's not just to share that information with our legislators. And um Superintendent Dotson and I actually did have an opportunity first thing Monday morning um to speak with our legislators from the twenty second. Um, so that was fantastic, especially for me as the legislative rep, because um it gave a real quick preview and kind of let us know, you know, right away to where they where they're headed. And um particularly Representative Dolan, um, who has been a a big champion in a lot of the areas that impact Humwater the most, and particularly in the funding, um, was able to speak to some of the legislation that um she had put forward and then kind of give those insights about where things are going. So um what I've done to try to keep things manageable is at at least for now, um primarily focus on the bills that directly touched our legislative priorities that we just talked about. Um, it's actually quite exciting in that everything that's on that list are things that were covered in hearings this week. So I'm going to speak to the three main areas. Um, one of them is uh an act relating to pupil tran- pupil transportation. The other one is enrollment stabilization. And then the last one is the prototypical um school model. So um the first one is a Senate Bill fifty five eighty one. And that's the one around um the transportation. And so what this is really about, once again, falls directly within that very first priority that we just talked about in terms of looking at funding that reflects actual costs. Um, this requires school districts to submit data regarding actual costs and miles of transporting qualifying students with disabilities, qualifying students who are homeless and qualifying students in foster care beginning in the twenty twenty three school year. Um, requires that OSPI reimburse a hundred percent of school district costs for transporting those students and requires OSPI to take a look at student and this and analysis of the district transportation costs and allocations and um essentially do a study of that model that's been in place for quite some time and report back to the education and fiscal committees um by twenty twenty five. So that last piece is recognizing that that formula is really complicated, but it's critically important. And that's one something that the pandemic has shown with respect to the transportation funding model, um that that needs probably a review. Um, the enrollment stabilization. So there is a there is actually a Senate bill and a House bill. Um, but as Representative Dolan explained to us, you know, one of the big differences um with respect to the House and the Senate, um, the Senate uh education committees will actually deal with funding, whereas the House will not. And so the companion to this, the Senate Bill fifty five sixty three, which is put forward by Senator Wellman, who's the Chair of the K twelve um Senate Education Committee, um huge champion for um for K twelve schools. Um, that's the first one. And this one is looking to provide proportional enrollment stabilization amounts in the twenty one, twenty two school year. So that's this year right now. Um, if an LEA's combined state revenue in the twenty one, twenty two school year is less than what the combined state revenue was in the twenty nineteen twenties. So trying to look at pre pandemic um enrollment amounts. And then there's some pieces in here about um doing some, some of those changes to the levy um that we talked about too in our in our priorities. Um, I was able to listen to the the Senate hearing earlier this week. There was a tremendous number of people who um signed in to testify, heard from lots of school districts, lots of superintendents um and education leaders that described in grave detail how critically important this is. Um, so the companion House bill to that is sixteen or I'm sorry fifteen ninety. Um, and as Representative Dolan explained to us, this came through, but it was directly referred to House appropriations because House Education Committee does not deal with um with money. And uh explained that it's essentially a budget bill and it's just going to go through straight through. So that was, um, that was good to see that kind of on both sides because that suggests a lot of support in that area. And then the last section around the prototypical uh school model, this is another one where there is a House and a Senate bill. So the first one is House Bill sixteen sixty four. And this is concerning prototypical school formulas for physical, social and emotional support in schools. This one's really focused on increasing minimum allocations for school nurses in the prototypical school funding model over three years. And um specifies funding in that model for all, not just nurses, but social workers, psychologists, guidance counselor, safety staff. Um, and all of those uh key support areas um come up to that actual funded ratio piece. The uh similar Senate bill, it's very similar, but um slightly different um is Senate Bill fifty five ninety five. Um, and this one also called concerning political school formulas, physical, social and emotional support in schools. Um, this one also increases the minimum allocations for nurses, social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors and um provides allocations for those support staff may abuse for salaries and benefits of those physical, social and emotional support staff. And also reduces the average skill center class size within the prototypical school model from twenty students per teacher to nineteen students per teacher. So um this was another one that had a, you know, hearings and was able to listen in on that. And there was a tremendous amount of support for this, for these bills, for this legislation. Um, I believe it was, and everything blends together to watch a lot of hearings. I can't remember if it was the House and Senate, but uh there was a uh work session right before hearing the particular bill um where there were nurses that came in to testify about what's been happening with them in schools. The impact on them, the downstream impact on all of the staff around them. Um, there was uh several other panels that came in and spoke to the mental health crisis that we are all familiar with and have heard about. And um how desperately needed the again, the adjustments to that prototypical school model that are not fully reflecting the needs. And they weren't before, but particularly now with um with the pandemic still going strong. Um, so those are the, those are the big summaries. Um, I will with the short session, it's hard to believe um a month from now, all of this stuff will be finished. Last time I, well, all of it in terms of, you know, the policy cutoff. Last time I had laid out that calendar because it could get really, really long, particularly if it ended up being a long session that went even longer. But um I want to say that it might be the week of our next board meeting that at least policy cutoff will have come through. So um we'll have a, we'll have a lot more information to share at that time. Things would be that much more further progressed along. Um, but the, you know, and the last thing I just wanted to make sure to share and and reinforce is that a couple of these um bills are, you know, OSPI supported pieces of legislation as well. They really reinforced the idea that um has already kind of been discussed in our earlier budget conversations about um January and um starting to look at apportionment and pulling back on some school districts and how incredibly destructive that would be at this point in time. Um, so the message is definitely out there. And once again, I I think there's a decent amount of support um for this. So don't want to like get too hopeful, but um it is, it is encouraging. Superintendent Dotson, anything to add?
You know, I know I think you did a great job. I I had the opportunity, I I signed up to testify both on the transportation bill and the comprehensive schools bill. I found uh uh in the Senate Education Committee and uh there were so many people signed up on the other. I think they moved me over to the transportation, but did have a chance to. Uh, there were so many people ready to speak that they were giving people one minute, which is unusual. I usually usually get two to three. And so uh everyone was having to be incredibly concise, but it it was overwhelmingly supportive on those. So hopefully uh that we see some movement.
Great. Thank you, Director Kike, in uh Superintendent Dotson. Any questions? Or either of those, I just had a quick question, Director Kike, in. Would the the prototypical school model funding, House bill, Senate bill, do those usually get combined? Or does one go away or is one looking better than the other? Or is it just too early to tell right now?
Oh, I'm having a hard time remembering how that consolidates together. Um, Director, Superintendent, can you remind me how that typically will go?
You know, they kind of bounce them back. It seems like in my experience, one of them gets favored a little bit over the other, and then they start bouncing it back and forth and changing language. Um, you'll see it come out of both house. It's nice when you see it come out of both houses because it shows pretty strong support for it. It's just a matter of which of those bills ends up getting traction. And they at some point have to settle on one and maybe drop the other. And 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 I can't speak to exactly how they make that decision. I imagine that comes out of the caucuses and and discussions that are happening uh uh behind closed doors at times.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. I'll go ahead, Director Beer. Can add to that?
Sometimes it's whichever is to the House or the Senate who wants to take credit or the sponsor who wants to be able to take credit. That's how, that's how, that's what drives it. Um, but also um they'll work on it in the House and Senate. And eventually, if they both get go over to the other side, they'll just, they'll start, they'll start morphing together. Um, and then during co- during conference committee at the the very last week, if there are still differences, that's when everyone sits down. That's the time that everyone sits down, but it doesn't happen till the last week um of session. And then they come out with something where they all agree.
Great. Thank you, Director Beer. Any other questions? On the legis- or the, yeah, the legislative update? Okay, let's see. Now it's time for board member comments. Please keep in mind that each board member, we are running a little late tonight, so let's keep it to two minutes, please. Um, any volunteers on going first? Okay, great. I will go first then and I may keep it real short. Um, just Just keeping the theme of legislature. Please keep in mind, the board, we don't, we don't, we have control over things, but a lot of things we don't have control over. That's been on display now for over two years, or almost two years, for emergency powers. But please contact your legislatures and tell them to support these bills. Find out who they are. They do actually listen. Sometimes you can actually get a hold of them. But please reach out, send an email if nothing else. That's what I do. I usually send an email as myself, as a parent, and then also as my role too. So, that was me, my one little piece tonight. And of course, another reminder for our student that we lost last month, Skylar Bush, and our condolences out to her family and her friends and staff members. Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Oh, I get to pick. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I was still unmuted. I didn't even notice. So, yes, I can go next. Thank you. Okay, so at our December meeting, I think my comment was, I was looking forward to getting back out to some events and being able to attend more things. And I had a fantastic Power Week, the week of December 13th. It began with having the privilege of attending the Nisqually Council to discuss the adoption of the use of, continued use of the Tumwater Thunderbird. That was an incredible experience. Another thank you to Director Beard for facilitating that. It was really very powerful. I wish everybody in the entire district could have been there just to, just to experience that. It's, it was, yeah, it was like unmatched. And then, later that evening, I was able to attend the band in the orchestra concerts at Tumwater High School. They were doing their, their holiday music essentially. And I was in band in high school. And I have, since I come here, been looking forward to going to a band concert. And that was the first time I had the opportunity to do so. It was fantastic. And then, I also was able to catch the boys' basketball game on my way out there. So, there was that as well. And then, on December 17th in the morning, I was able to attend the Michael T. Simmons Winter Concert. Also fantastic, got to see three different groups of students perform. I was just at the very end of that concert when receiving the email about Skylar@MichaelT. And I want to give a special recognition to Justin Cowan, who was the music teacher that took care of the entire music concert by himself. It was something I noticed anyway, was going to comment and compliment him on anyway. It was incredible to see how his passion came through in such an, just in amazing way to work with all of those kids, all different grade levels. And my understanding is, is that he learned of this news in the middle of that concert and had to continue on. I, there, there's really no words. So, I, yeah, there's no words to describe what that must have been like. And I just wanted to provide that additional acknowledgement in addition to, again, acknowledging the, the pain and the sorrow and how much Skylar will be in my thoughts.
Thank you, Director Kakenin. Who would like to go next?
I can go next.
Thank you, Director Beer.
So, yes, I, I also enjoy, I need to bring the blanket. I also enjoyed the Nisqually Council, it's sitting on my piano bench. It was, it was a beaut, it was a beautiful thing. What I, what I was amazed at is that we were going and asking for permission to use a Thunderbird, but they were the ones thanking us. I, I think that's what struck me. And is, it is a great lesson to us all that working together is really where we need to be, that this was, that they were thanking us for, for coming. And they talked about it being the largest crowd of people they've ever had a council meeting. And it was all of, it was our students and our staff and our board members. And I just, they were honoring us. Well, I, I, I just, I was really struck by, by that. And one thing I will want to do is add some sort of like tribal update because, like I said, like I said, the December meeting, I'm going to be working with Squawson Island and Nisqually about, you know, the relationships that we have with them as a board and also making, you know, encouraging the relationships that our teachers have with, with the tribes to assist in the teachings. I went to the, the tree lighting, the Tumwater tree lighting. So, I got to see a bunch of choirs and the marimba band. And it is similar to Director Kakenin's experience of watching the concert, watching our choir, our band, our choir and band directors trying to manage all of these people at an event is amazing. And all the work that it takes to get there. So, I have the, I had the privilege of being able to talk to them either before or after the performance and to thank them. And it was, it was a lot of fun. So, I got to see the marimba band from Tumwater Hill. I got to see the high school. Oh, yes. Oh, they were talking about you, Talia, for sure. Love you. And the, the high school, Tumwater High School Choir, and then Peter G. Schmidt's choir, which was humongous. So, so that was a lot of fun. And then, I got, I don't know who else went to go look at the doors at East Ole, but that was, yeah, yeah, Superintendent Dotson was there also. But I got to go look at the doors and it was really hard to vote. I like to look at all my choices first before I vote. And the kid, they, Ms. Kilmer had kids come out to explain the doors at some, for some of the costumes to explain the doors. And they were just so excited. And I said it in my Facebook post, it was so cute. Everyone got a ticket to vote and I did not see one kiddo vote for their own door. They were all so excited either to vote for their brother's door or, you know, their, their neighbor's door, you know, or something like that. And I just was struck, the, the, the theme of the month was kindness. And I, it was, it just struck me just how kind everyone was being. They were not worried about winning. They were just so excited about looking at other people's doors and voting for other people. So, that was, that was really fun to see. And everyone was so excited. It was a lot of energy, a lot of good energy there. And about Skylar Bush, so my sister also died when she was in elementary school. And I want, I, I want to acknowledge the classmates of Skylar. They will forever remember this experience and they will. And it is something that they will carry with them. And so, I want to make sure that we are making sure, even after this month or this year, that, that we, that we understand that they will still be affected by, by her being here and now her not being here. And it's, it's something that my sister's friends, they're in their 40s and they still remember her from first grade and talked to me about it. So, I just, I just want to remind us that we still are, you know, we still support them long after, long after this, this school year. So, my condolences to the family.
Thank you, Director Beer. Who would like to go next about our student rep, Talia? Would you like to go?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I, um, I thought this was a very good meeting and especially being on Zoom. This is my first time on Zoom with you guys. And this is actually my first time on Zoom since last, last year because of COVID. So, it was kind of like a, it was, it was a little much. It was, but it's good. This was a good experience, you know. I want to say thank you for the, like, the equity surveys that we went through. I, I really appreciate that as a student, seeing the, the work being put into that. And it's, it's really hard to be told those kind of things. And I never thought that it would be hard until it was pointed out. Anyways, so I wanted to say thank you for staff and board, yeah, everyone for still working hard for everything. And major condolences to the family. Yeah, this was my first night hearing about that and it's devastating to hear. I never had a classmate pass away as I grew up. I know it'd be tough because the kids I know in my senior class are almost like family in a way. I mean, we've known each other since possibly kindergarten, first grade, so, you know. So, my condolences and my thoughts are with that family.
Great. Thank you very much. Maya, would you like to go next?
Yes, I want to say my condolences too. That's really, I, yeah, my condolences, sorry about that. And, uh, sorry. Yeah, I also want to say, like, thank you for, like, the teachers and the staff. I know it's like, like, you guys are trying really hard to make sure to have connections with everybody. And like, you guys want to make sure that's there, like, when you don't, like, when you see that students, sorry, and you see that students aren't, there's a significant number of students that don't fill that way. It's, I know that, that can be, that's hard. So, I want to thank you guys and the staff at the schools. Like, we understand that you're trying, so, yes, thank you. And it's, it was interesting seeing all the, the data that you got, that we saw. I saw some of it, I saw it from my school, but I didn't see it for like the whole, like, with everybody. So, it was interesting seeing all of that. And, yeah, that's, that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Just a quick note, and Lori Weedenmeyer pointed out earlier that our student reps, they were very evolved tonight. So, thank you very much. It's great to hear that student voice and you both did a great job tonight. So, thank you again. Director Killa, would you like to go finish up for us?
All right, batting cleanup. I never got to do that in baseball. I was always leadoff. Anywho, so, a lot of teachers, a lot of schools, just within our districts, a lot of districts in our region, just about every district in our state, all 295 of them are really feeling the pinch of COVID right now with staffing. And it's affecting staffing in schools and it's affecting student numbers in class. One day, I might be teaching 12 and tomorrow I'm teaching a different 12. And I, and it wasn't because I'm on hybrids, because that's who's showing up or not showing up. So, that brings me to my point. We need to stoke the fires of volunteerism. And I know COVID has put barriers on that. So, whatever we can do to communicate to our families and our students of what barriers can be avoided so that they can get back into our schools and help volunteer because our schools need people. They need people for supervision, they need people for lunch duty, for playground duty. Seniors and juniors volunteer, and that also counts as your hours. So, hey, it goes right in theme with tonight. Teachers need reading buddies, math buddies. They need lunch supervision, they need playground supervision. You get out of school an hour before they do. There's an hour a day, 30 days, you're done. So, basically, six weeks of school time. They need parking lot pickup supervision because you got a lot of kids running around. They just need bodies out there directing traffic and making sure kids aren't running into traffic, making sure the adults obey the traffic laws and the cones. And so, that's my, my plea tonight is reach out to your schools, us as a district. Let's see what we can do to communicate what barriers need to be removed so people can get back into schools and being volunteers because I know COVID put a clamp on that. But let's see what has changed so we can maybe get ourselves back in the buildings. And in regards to a tragedy, as a former teacher, I cry every time I hear a student dies. It doesn't matter where. Anytime there's a shooting, anytime a student is, a family had their child swept away in a flood this past couple of weeks. So, I hear about that with my job. A superintendent's husband swept away in a flood. A superintendent's daughter died due to COVID compilation, or I can't think of the word. Anyway, you know what I'm talking about. Anyway, when it comes to a tragedy, many times we get quiet because we're not sure what to say or afraid of what we do say is going to offend. So, former students of Little Rock, I would wholeheartedly say, even if it's just simply an email or a card, reach out to your teachers and just say, hey, I'm here, I'm thinking about you. And if there's anything you need, please let me know. And that can just be that simple, just to let them know that you're thinking of them. Just to know that someone out there is thinking of me, it can just get me through the week. So, there you have it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Killa, for batting cleanup for us. I appreciate that. Okay, well, we hung out a long enough. It looks like Director Sale was not able to get on. So, we will go ahead and conclude our regular meeting. Thanks for attending. With no further business coming before the board, the regular meeting is adjourned at 8:47 PM. The board now will go into closed session. And then, we plan to be in there for approximately 30 minutes. And then, we will come out of closed session and adjourn that meeting as well. Superintendent Dotson, is that correct?
No, you know, a closed session is not quite an executive session. So, we won't come back out to that. So.
Great. No, we will go, we will break into closed session and that will be the end of our evening. So, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.